So, welcome everyone to this EU Cluster Talk on Cluster Management 101. We're talking about the Cluster Booster Academy to develop your skills to make yours a cluster of the future. I'm Chris Burns and I'll be with you during this session where, you know, I was with many of you at that Cluster Conference here in Brussels recently, and there were calls there for more skills, more help on developing skills, including management skills. So that's why this is really important to talk about this. Great to see all of you having connected. And these Cluster Talks are organized by the European Cluster Collaboration Platform, ECCP. That's 1,500 organizations on behalf of DG Grow at the European Commission. So let's take a look at the agenda. We'll begin with Cluster News from Nina, then key learnings from the Cluster Booster Academy, then participants in previous Cluster Management Trainings, and your Q&amp;A comments from you. We want to hear from you as well. And then there will be funding opportunities at the very end. Let's take a look at some tech tips. Your questions can be put into the Zoom Q&amp;A function you see at the bottom of your screen. There's also the chat. It's really good to watch the chat because we put a lot of links and stuff in there. And send your questions in, you know, we want to hear from you and we'll do Q&amp;A throughout this session. So if you have anything to ask, please do. And hashtag EU Cluster Talks if you hear of something good to cast wider. And sometimes these discussions go by kind of fast and you might want to look back at this stuff. So we're recorded for playback and the slides that you see will also be available on the Cluster Collaboration Platform. So let's get started with the news from the European Cluster Collaboration Platform with Nina Hupman, team member at the ECCP. Nina?
Good morning, Chris. Thanks and good morning, everyone. Looking forward to seeing you here in this webinar and talking about the Cluster Booster Academy and the learnings. And we are also happy to announce that the next Booster Academy is just around the corner. You can already apply for the next edition, which is open to up to 50 participants and will run up to five days in a hybrid format. So you will have three days of online training sessions, which will happen on November, one coaching sessions, and then two in-person training sessions happening in the beginning of March in Warsaw. But this is a great opportunity to learn from cluster managers, to further develop your skills, to talk about your daily work, learn from each other's experience, but also to look at European policies and programs and support better policy related to clusters as well as improve the skills of your cluster staff and then train the trainer approach. So we invite you all to register for the next Cluster Booster Academy. Just click on the link in the chat and it will lead you to all of them. You can also save the date for the upcoming Clusters Meet Regions, which are our events to bring together clusters and policymakers from different levels, from local to national, but also European, with the aim to strengthen the industrial ecosystem in the selected host regions and to exchange and good practices and discuss the role of clusters in the regional economies and describe us on green and digital transition and to improve these things. Next, events will take place in Parma de Mallorca in Spain on the 24th and 25th of October, in Heidelberg in Germany on the 13th and 14th of November, and in Chalobah in Belgium on the 27th and 28th of November. So mark the dates, select the event you would like to come to, and we will see you there. Another opportunity is the CETA Lab, the Cluster Collaboration Lab, which has much more practical approach. What we do here is in a workshop, work with you on your next project proposal. So we invite you to this workshop, which will take place in Strasbourg in France on the 25th and 26th of September, to meet new cluster peers, discuss project ideas, and to initiate collaborations and plan your next proposal, maybe for a European call, but maybe also have funding opportunities in mind. And we will work with you on those project proposals here in Strasbourg. You can already register, so click on the link in the chat if you want to participate in the CETA Lab. If you're more looking into matchmaking, especially internationally, there are open opportunities. One is for Canada in mid-September in the context of the All-In Event, which focuses on artificial intelligence. So the European delegation will go to Montreal to Canada to find C2C, C2B, or B2B business collaborations between EU or custom countries and Canada with the focus areas on AI, advanced manufacturing, digital technologies, and quantum technologies. So have a look at this event if you're interested in Canada. If you're more looking into Singapore, the matchmaking will be hosted in the context of the Singapore International Energy Week on the 22nd to the 24th of October. And here the focus areas are clean energy and green tech, e-mobility, sustainability and digital tech, and the energy transition finance. And so it's a very interesting topics. If you're interested in going to Singapore with us, please register for this event.
That really shows the global reach of the Cluster Collaboration, right?
Indeed.
Amazing. And India too, yeah.
India is also in store, so we have this event coming up for mid-November and the 18th to 21st. So you can already cycle this into your calendar if you're interested in India and more info will be published soon on the ECCP. Moving from the events to other services and news. You might have heard of the Trend Universe, which is a service from the ECCP to look into future trends for your cluster, also important for cluster management, what we will discuss today. But there's an info session on how to use the Trend Universe and make the case for the cluster organization next week on the 25th at 3:00 PM. So register for this and so you can learn how to create trend radars for your specific region or ecosystem and to see how you can use the recommendations from the tool for your work in future. Working on Ukraine, you're invited to join the focus group Ukraine Meetings. The next one will be tomorrow also early at 8:30. And here you will, you're invited to discuss with the focus group the European Defense Strategy and the role of Ukraine and its businesses in it, as well as the outcome of the Ukraine Recovery Conference in Berlin. And this takes place regularly. And when you scan the QR code or go on the link in the chat, you get to the form where you can express your interest to join these meetings of the focus group Ukraine. The group is run by the European Commission and gathers stakeholders from both the EU and Ukraine to inform about EU policy developments and also to talk about business collaboration and relevant things. And last but not least, one announcement regarding AI, which is also a very interesting topic, which a lot of us are dealing with right now. There's a new regulation on the use of supercomputing and AI development. Here, the Council has adopted an amendment to support the development and operation of the so-called AI factories, which are infrastructures that the EU facilitates to make available to European startups and SMEs, train AI models and develop the products. So very interesting to look out. Maybe this is very important for your members to make use of those AI factories in the future. And with that, I stop here. You can read all the news and the links on the chat and go to the ECCP. And so that we can start with the topic now. Thanks.
That's great. Nina, thank you so much. Yeah, let's go and do a lightning round first with all the speakers. And if all the speakers can put their cameras on so we can see you. Let's start with a quick elevator pitch from Manuel Zeufert, a team member of the European Cluster Collaboration Platform. You run those cluster trainings, don't you?
Exactly. Good morning, everyone. Good to see you and good to have you here. Thanks, Chris, and thanks for having me. Yes, indeed. So my name is Manuel Zeufert. I'm a director with Conny Improve. And we have the honor of leading the consortium behind the ECCP. And then especially, I'm in charge of the Cluster Booster Academy, so many of you might have met me in person. And I'm going to talk about a little detail and takeaways on that in a second and happy to hand over to the next speaker.
Great. Let's go to Johann Wasberg, who was, you went to one of those academies. So we want to get kind of feedback from you on that. You're at the Technology Center of Marinnova, right? In Finland?
Yes. Good morning from Finland. I am Johann. I have been working with the energy cluster and energy technology companies in Vasa for, I used to say, prehistoric time, which means 26 years, 27 years.
That's prehistoric, yeah.
So I will make a summary of what we have learned and try to give a bit of advice what works and what does not work.
Okay. Excellent. Nora Sirmy, Communication Manager at Innoscard, is that right?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm Communication Manager of Innoscard since more than five years now. Innoscard Digital Clusters' mission is to accelerate the digital transformation of Hungary via Hungarian cluster. And thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here with you.
That's great. And you're with, let's see, we have Zolt with us, Zolt Kedesturi?
Yes, my name is...
Yes, there you are. Sorry.
I am here. I am here, yeah. I am the Cluster Manager of Innoscard Digital Cluster, actually. And I had the chance to participate at the Cluster Booster Event in Strasbourg. Actually, it was my first day at Innoscard.
Oh, really? Wow.
I started very well.
That's great. That's great. Okay, super. Let's go back then up to Johann. Let's get started there and see your... You got a slide, a bit of, a few slides to show us on how things are working, how it works. And then also you've got some feedback, I think, too, from the participants. That's good to know. And if there's anybody else who's been participating, it's great to hear from you as well. Anyway, Johann.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, sorry, Manuel. Manuel, sorry.
Yeah, happy, happy to start. So sorry, Johann, if I may jump in to start from kind of the skill set and key learnings.
Let's do that.
And then happy to hand over to you. So yeah, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Cluster Manager Skills and some takeaways from the learning. Actually, as you see on the next slide, my kind of input is going to be divided into three parts where, to start with, I'm going to show a couple of typical cluster challenges that actually we worked on with you, that you provided in your workshop sessions. I'm going to have a quick view on a theoretical framework that we applied to move forward. And then, last but not least, actually the most important, going to show a couple of key points and takeaways that we all worked on and took from those sessions and that I hope and believe are useful in your daily work. To start with the, with the cluster challenges, yeah, all fine, we can, we can jump right in. And so to start with the cluster challenges, here we took the example from the last Cluster Booster Academy. There have been three so far. There's a fourth one coming up. And in the last one, we identified more than 20 challenges with the group of clusters working on those in like subgroups. And then, well, we obviously had to choose in terms of timing. So we selected three challenges in particular. That was the member engagement, the creation of innovative services, and the identification of new members. And we then went on together with you in those subgroups to work on potential solutions. And that's what we did and what we summarized here on these slides. So it's actual hand-on work and we created a couple of approaches, as you can see. So to, for example, offer more individualized services or personalized solutions to enhance member satisfaction and increase their engagement, or to host knowledge sharing events and so-called fuck-up nights to even talk about failure and implement a failure mindset and failure culture. And it's a quote from the startup scene that I brought from one of my previous working experiences.
And, well, that's good.
It's an actual term. It's always...
Is that right? Okay. So it's publishable then?
It's publishable. It's not that I would just write on slides. It's a common term where you talk about their mistakes and what they learned from it and why it will be better done next time.
So you don't have so many snafus?
No, exactly, exactly. And of course, then also, as you see here, like communication is a thing, right? So we talked about ways to communicate to the stakeholder, to the ecosystem, to increase the cluster's awareness. And all of these did go into very concrete action plans. So we created actions plans in those, in those groups as well and to take this from a, from a kind of methodological theoretical approach into actual life with lots of examples from you. Examples from various clusters, ranging actually from the very south to the very north of Norway. So remember, yeah, participants from Finland, Sweden participate and share their thoughts and details. Heavy and nice discussions with some of the panelists to share their view on communication in some sessions earlier. And then in the workshops, we were able to pick that on and see how can we get a targeted marketing campaign for a cluster going. So that was, that was intense and I think very, very straightforward to solutions. How did we get there? Well, we applied, as you can see here on the next chapter, we applied a theoretical framework that we brought, that we, as Conny improved, that we apply also in our consulting work with other stakeholders that we brought and adapted to the cluster ecosystem. And well, you can see now that there are six steps on the next slides where those things, they go hand-in-hand to enable a cluster to, well, have a review, potential update, adaptation of the cluster strategy. And that's what we did, right? We went through all those six steps with you in the last Cluster Booster Academy. Actually, in all three, but always a little different approach in terms of how to set this up to continuously update ourselves and the CBA as an offering of the ECCP. And what is done here with this framework, there are two external oriented or external-looking steps. The strength analysis and the understanding, identification of member and cluster needs, to understand what you should have a look at. You might summarize this customer centricity and understanding all the surrounding of the stakeholder ecosystems. Those of you who participated might remember. And then we performed kind of four internal steps. As you can see, those are the output factors. So you use the first two ones as input and then you have an internal look at the cluster and create output on vision, mission, and objectives on a competency assessment. So what is the current cluster team or cluster management team able and capable of? And what might need to be an extension in terms of capabilities and where to get them from? Hiring new members, we discussed. Working with ecosystem partners, we discussed from digital innovation hubs to enterprise Europe network members and partners, et cetera, to ultimately lead to a service portfolio that is a nice offering and a comprehensive offering to your members and to potential new members. And then finally, it has to be communicated. So that is, that is some takeaway. That has been the six-step theory. And I don't want to bore you today. You're not here today to participate in some teaching classes, but just as a reminder, that was kind of the overview of the theory. To look at the most important part of my little presentation here, very happy to jump onwards and have a look at the key takeaways and the key points you took and you worked on, where I'm going to start with kind of a little, well, summary of the impressions that we had, right? So a couple of impressions here from Bulgaria, where you can see a great, a great place. We were hosted on a huge campus with the possibility to have a nice panel room to go into detail or like split up group work rooms. And you see, you see the participants on this summary picture on the bottom. Had a great time, enjoyed the discussions, went into individual discussions as well in all the breaks and parts where we continued working on details, had some nice dinner in the evening. So that was a great time. So everybody who's still looking forward to participate in a Cluster Booster Academy, please refer to the open call.
Yeah, Manuel, it also looks like it's, you had good attendance, but it's not too big a group so that it's barely personalized, right? People can really get what they need and again, there can be one-on-one if need be, right?
Yeah, exactly. So I mean, this has not only been Sofia, it has been Turin as well. I think that even the picture on the bottom is from Turin. And then it has been Strasbourg, as Johann and George, you heard from them, they participated. So yes, we had a, we had a good time and we, we keep it in a reasonable group size, I might say, in order to, well, get to real impact and results and to make it personal and allow also for networking. Many of you know that. You, of course, you learn from peers, not only from someone who's standing in the front, but you engage with your peers, your network, you connect. And that was very valuable and highly appreciated event, as I learned from the feedback.
Great.
To share, sorry, yeah, to, to, to share that with you, here a couple of feedback points where we see that, well, on a one-to-five liquid scale, all these answers come from. And we see that there's really high participants' satisfaction with what the CBA is offering and how it's conducted, helping 94% of the cluster managers to overcome current challenges. So everyone can take a little piece away that helps him or her to improve something in daily business. And then reflecting on the, on the strategy or working on the, on the financials of the cluster, you see 97, 87% mentioned those aspects. High recommendation rate to join for partners and colleagues. So as the center of this slide points out, 97% would recommend. There was three maybe, to be honest. But that might, that might be also a personal and decisions on whether this not is applicable. And you see that the aim of CBA is achieved when we see that 100% agree that this broadened the horizon of the participating cluster managers with this Cluster Booster Academy to create value for their members. Well, the problem-solving skills depend a bit on the actions we performed in the workshops, but I'm still happy and glad about these numbers overall. And with taking this as a, as a kind of feedback summary, jumping to my very last slide to keep this short and crisp here for you today is to look at some key aspects to keep in mind when building or respectively scaling up in potentially looking for some improvement of your cluster. Act customer-centric. That has been something that many of you already do. And we just took another kind of well-structured perspective on this to, to, to shape this in the best possible way. Adopt failure culture, going back to, and I quote from the startup scene, those fuck-up nights, for example, right? Talk about failures, not necessarily in the way on what did not go well, but rather on something that did not go well, why did it not go well? And how to overcome what to learn to make it better next time. Collaborate internationally. We see that in many, many places. So it does not necessarily only have to be other cluster partners. It can be other stakeholder partners and it helps to open up internationally. So many of you have been at the Cluster Conference and it was good to talk to you, good to see you and to see that you enjoy exactly doing that. Communicate the impact that you create as a cluster for your members, for the ecosystem, for stakeholders in your ecosystem. And that is, that is something that I can only highly suggest to you to do even more. And enhance visibility of the cluster via activities, via communication, via engagement and in a, on a local, national, international level. So those five key aspects I can use as a summary of the CBA to keep in mind when you want to scale or build up a new cluster, scale up the existing ones. And I'm looking forward to have the fourth CBA together with you or some of you and to work on those and similar aspects in the future as well. Thanks for listening. And now, as I saw in the chat, happy to have questions if there are any.
Yes.
Back to Chris.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Manuel. Yes, I do see a question here coming in. Do you envisage the CBA to be open as well to cluster staff who are not cluster managers but could also benefit from the training?
Good question, very good question. And indeed, for the third Cluster Booster Academy, so the one here in Sofia, we convinced the Commission, so our Contracting Authority, that this might be a valuable way. And we started doing this. So yes, for the fourth Cluster Booster Academy, we envision that cluster staff is also allowed to participate. And so it does not necessarily only have to be the cluster manager, but we will open this up for the staff as well.
Okay, great. Sounds good. Yeah, it's nice to see Ricardo Gonzalez from Wood and Design Cluster in Galicia. He, I guess he worked with you on one of the, one of those academies, right? One of the academy events?
Absolutely, Ricardo, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So hi Ricardo. So let's, let's move on then. And please do send in your questions and we'll jump in with those as much as we can. Let's go to Johann Wasberg, Senior Expert at the Technology Center of Marinnova. That's on the west coast of Finland. The motto for your Technology Center is Innovation with Energy. And it's all about energy, isn't it?
Yes, thank you. We only think energy. Would you like a few words about the Academy at some stage or?
Sure, let's do, yeah. Because you went to one, right? How was that?
Yeah, it exceeded my expectations. So I was very happy with it. I see, I see, in my case, I see three benefits basically and the major benefits, the best benefits. That is, of course, the, what we saw, the three remote training days. And then I think it's related to the question. Then I understood it's totally okay that other, other colleagues than the one in the Academy participates in also the remote days. So we were, I was sitting with my colleague, EU Affairs Manager, Martina. So I think maybe Manuel can ask, but maybe in the remote, it can be two or three other staff members.
Yeah, that's something that I can't promise yet. So very, we'll gladly discuss with the EC, but here we're a bit bound also to their vision of the CBA to take place. If we can get back to that number later.
Yeah. The frameworks, the tools provided, we saw some examples where, where very interesting and useful. And, and also the, the tools on the ECCP homepage. I remember the Trend Universe was new to me and I was happy to learn about that. It is very diverse. It is quite broad and beneficial to see what other people think about the trends going on on the planet. Exchange of experience with other colleagues is always good. I especially remember the very good thematic workshops we had then in the in-person days. We discussed, how have you done this and what can we learn? And of course, it's always good to expand the network and the Cluster Academy is a good place to do that also.
Yeah, it's kind of a networking thing, networking at the same time.
Exactly, networking. And also in the in-person days to learn more about the local clusters where we were. So I was very happy. So I recommend it to colleagues.
Yeah, interesting in the, in the chat, someone, I'd say Sylvia asked, is the CBA free? Or do participants have to pay for it? And I saw, yeah, Manuel, you came back and said it is free. There are no fees. So that's good to know. Only the travel costs have to be covered by each participant by them, by themselves. So.
Indeed, exactly.
But the actual Academy itself, that's, that's paid for.
Actually, the Academy is a, well, paid-for service by the Commission. So there's no fees for the participants to participate, well, to benefit from this service, from this offering, from this exchange. Just have a cost to cover.
Yep, that's great. Let's, Johann, we digress. Let's go back to you.
Thank you. A few words about good practices, what I would recommend in the coming 10 minutes. We are located pretty far north, just below the polar circle in Vasa. And we, two years ago, we achieved the gold label, which we like to show to everyone. And, uh, we, uh, two years ago, we, we achieved the gold label, which we like to show to everybody, of course. And we have to, to renew it, it, uh, it at some stage, sorry, yeah. Uh, next, please. And, uh, in terms of strategy, then, uh, then, uh, Manuel said that it, we have to be customer oriented and centered. So the, the main thing, uh, I think is that we listen and sit with the talk and listen to the members and, and look where, where are the bottlenecks, what to do, they want us to do and, and one important thing is to, to get the, the right person from the, from the companies. Because some people see only problems, others see only opportunities, and we want the opportunity people involved in the cluster development and cluster work. So sometimes we have to, to try to maybe change some of the company member representatives also in one way or the other. Uh, what we did with quite good experience, what to, to, of course, to quite early stage, divide the strategy preparation into priority areas and have, uh, the key actors in those priority areas. We had research and technology development. We had the group on market visibility, staff ability, training and so on and so on. And of course, this depends on the cluster. Then we, we, uh, involved about ten to twenty key persons, actors in, in each group and, uh, the.
So not, so not too big a group then, right? You want to keep it.
Uh, I think.
Personalized, kind of like how Johan does. Like, uh, Manuel does, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eighty, eighty persons divided into four thematic groups and, uh, well, to summarize, you lock them into a room and then you don't let them out be before they have come up with some priority projects and.
All right.
And then they have to have a consensus and then we discuss this with all people and prioritize this. So, so, uh, I found, uh, in our case, uh, a, a good way of presenting the strategies, the fishbone diagram, when, when somebody asks what you do, what are your priority areas? We put the, on the big bones, we put the priority areas and then we put the actions we are doing on this. And thi- this is a quite, uh, better, got the easy way of summarizing what we do. And then as we implement these, we, uh, we, uh, mark them with the different colors. So this is the, basically the outcome was a, a, a fishbone diagram with, with priorities.
Very nice. You're on the coast, very maritime. It fits the, uh.
We, we have, we have eaten the fish. We only have the bone.
That's right.
Okay, next, please. Uh, then some, uh, some, let's say, hints or advice. Uh, it is very good to employ high level retiring CEOs from, uh, quite visible member companies or or so on to the clusters. They, they can be called spokesmen and they can work as, uh, uh, as an, uh, whatever title they have. But the main thing is that these people, they have very, first of all, they like to do something after retirement and they are well known and, and they have a lot of contacts. So they are totally great in, uh, in, in getting funding from the other companies because they have studied with other CEOs. So they, they make a few calls in the morning and they have fifty hundred thousand collected from private finance in the afternoon. And, and of course, they, they have also an authority like, uh, i- i- if you would have Elon Musk in your cluster as a spokesman, I think most people would listen to what he has to say. So, so and visibility and so on. Um, then we, we had, uh, a number of small seminars and event, no, nothing special. I, I used to call them pretty shitty. But then a guy came up with a great idea, let's do a week of the small insignificant events. So we came up with the annual thematic energy week, which has been extremely popular. And I think that can be done also with other clusters, optical week, space week, tech week, AI week and so on. And it, it really boosts the visibility and interest for, for the event because it's better that the people, they can one week and instead of five times during the year to some small events. So.
Hmm.
Uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Annual visits, discussions with members, very good. Sit down, drink coffee or something stronger and discuss what's wrong and what's good. Then, then make the triple helix function because it does not function well anywhere. So, so just to get the people communicating, it, it's a very good and to, to get, get them to, we, we have actually somebody interesting, uh, diagnostic tool for how well the triple helix work created by the regional council, okay?
And then triple helix, I mean, did, did you, can you explain that briefly, what triple helix is?
Yeah, well, it's the classical, the, the, the public authorities, the companies and the universities.
Oh, that, okay, yeah, that's triple helix, okay, sorry.
And everybody, yeah, they, they, they don't communicate very much anywhere, basically. So there is good, good, uh, the clusters need, need to make them to, to work and communicate.
Yeah, indeed, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then, uh, internationalization, the key is to have a reliable local partner in the target market. We have worked with the ministries of energy in the North African countries with technology days and.
Right.
One, one way we had was that a consultant actually from Scotland came and stayed, we, one week and visited the companies interested in Scotland and learned what they are looking for. Then he went back home and, and organized, uh, what the meetings. We, so we went with the companies three months later. It was well prepared and it.
Are those, uh, energy days that you organized? Is that, does that have to do with it, with Africa, North Africa?
Yeah, that's the internationalization. I have a link on the last two.
Yeah.
To the energy days in North Africa. So, so.
Ah, good. Yeah, that'd be good to put out.
Exactly, yes. Yes. Labeling, I get, uh, quite a lot of questions about labeling. I think it's about documentation and communication because if we don't, we don't have things documented, even if we do good work, we, we, it doesn't exist in the eyes of the labeling people. And if we are not able to communicate what we are doing good to the labeling people, we don't get any points at all. So, so the, in my view, uh, well functioning, uh, CRM system is a key factor. Uh, I have mentioned the podium, which is good because it has been made by, uh, cluster manager in Denmark, Morten Breit, more cluster management. So, so that is, and it's used by all Danish clusters except for one. Because if the Danish clusters wants to have some national money, they need to have the gold label. So, so that is, uh, the. What are the gold label benefits? Uh, people ask me also. Uh, I think it's a matter of visibility and recognition. Uh, it's also seems to affect the funding organizations. They know the cluster works pretty okay. And, uh, what surprised me was that the members were very enthusiastic about that. Oh, now we are gold label, great stuff. They put it on their own company pages and so on. And of course, the one good benefit is more efficient work of the cluster. So, um, I think I had the links. Was it the next one, please?
There you go. All the links, great.
We have the links to the cluster. I won't, uh, repeat what is there, Maranova. Uh, we made Finland clean the catalog, which format has been copied in five country, I think. So, uh, that is good. Other companies in, in Finland wanted to join us in the catalog. So we call it Finland. Uh, video from Energy Days in Tunisia, organized with the National Utility and the Ministry of Energy in Tunisia, quite nice and interesting. One, uh, one good marketing, uh, uh, action was to create the best summer job ever in Finland. So, uh, our marketing manager collected hundred thousand euros from the companies and advertised that we have a great summer job for a student, ten thousand a month, free car, free restaurant, free everything and hotels and one week with, uh, manager of the ten companies. So we got fifteen hundred applicants and, uh, uh, it cost, uh, the cost was hundred thousand, but in terms of visibility and media visibility, uh, the marketing manager calculated that around one million euro if we had to buy the advertising space. So, so that, it's a link to, to some information on that also. Uh, quite, we have been running a startup accelerator, uh, four or five years with totally public, private money. So there is a link to this energy spin also. Uh, companies are pay, willing to pay to, to see what is happening in terms of starts up on the planet. Because a small startup may make them out of business pretty quickly if, if it comes to. So I think that was in short what, what I, I hope I stayed with the times.
You sure did. Well, yeah, you, you did. Thank you very much. That's great. Um, I, I got a question, uh, from Ricardo over in, um, Barcelona. Uh, one question, how frequently do you visit in person your associated companies every year?
Uh, of course, we meet them in, during the work and projects and so, but I think the, the, the target is to visit them, to sit down once a year.
Once a year.
With them and, uh, and sometimes we don't manage it, but sometimes we manage it. And then it's very good to combine it with, let's say, some other interviews of the regional council or because, because we don't want to people to go and interview them every day. So we try to work together with other organizations to do the company discussions.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. Super. Okay, Johan, thank you very much. Stay with us. Let's go over uh, to Hungary, to Nora Sirmai and to Jolt Keresturi, um, at Inoskárt. Inoskárt, established in two thousand and six in order to strengthen cooperation between IT companies located in central Transdanubia, Hungary. That's west of Budapest. You work in healthcare, agrofood, robotization, circular economy, a lot of great issues that you deal, a lot of great, uh, sectors you deal with. Nora.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, when I'm talking about that, um, we, uh, I am, and with my colleagues, we are always, uh, thinking of, uh, what can we do to make the business and technological values of clusters uh, to be not only visible, but also attractive. Uh, so let me show you how the Inoskárt Digital Cluster in Hungary facing and overcoming the challenges of cluster communication. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, and next. Thank you. Let's start with the dual identity of cluster marketing. What I call the dual nature, dual identity of cluster marketing is the thing that, um, Inoskárt Cluster name covers both Inoskárt as a cluster management organization and Inoskárt as a community of cluster members. So let's see what does this mean for, from a marketing point of view. Um, first of all, next, please. Marketing and branding is necessary for management organization, of course. Uh, but cluster communication should also focus on increasing the visibility and the prestige of its members. This uniqueness together with the fact that we are not simply selling, um, a product or a service, but a complex and interlink system of support and networking makes it difficult to apply traditional common communication strategies. Um, next slide, please. I, um, write some, uh, objectives, uh, for you, um, and what you see, uh, it's highlighted a few difficulties. But I really want to speak about, uh, uh, the practical side of the things. Uh, please, the next slide. Uh, to be honest, we don't have a very extensive communication strategy, but we have assigned ambitious communication activities, um, and objectives to, uh, our very detailed and analytical cluster strategy. Uh, the point is to try to set achievable and measurable, uh, goals. Um, a major challenge for us, uh, was also how to, on the one hand, to market the cluster as a high profile community with the diverse and interlinked system of support and relationship. On the other hand, to promote the expertise, good practices and business competence of our member organizations uh, to their potential partners. If we have a competitor, uh, in our field, the, uh, believe me, that's an advantage. Uh, I have noticed that often, uh, the fact that cluster has no competitors in its own sector or in its own region, as is the case with, uh, many clusters in Hungary, uh, is also a factor that blocks the development because they don't necessarily fear the pressure to evolve. And this is not just a communication problem, of course. So we have to learn to communicate and show our values, even if there is no one to overtake.
So how do you do that? Nora, do you have like workshops to do that or how, how do you, how do you work on that?
Yes, yes, yes. We have workshops and I will, um, uh, tell you all about our meetings and, uh, events, uh, later then.
Okay.
Uh, I, I just try to find the problems that we face with, uh, and, um, we, uh, have noticed, uh, that, uh, business executives and other decision makers are so overwhelmed that they are practically unreachable and unengageable. Uh, use only LinkedIn as a social media channel. Some of, uh, don't even use that either. Uh, do not open their mails and only attend the events with exceptionally, uh, exceptional value propositions, both virtual and in person, uh, which is a problem because we can't, uh, get to, uh, reach them. So after we went through all these strategic steps that you see, uh, in the slide, we have concluded that our goal cannot be other than to bear the brand on the cluster's role and the sector expects this. So please, the next. Um, so what should, uh, the brand message be? And we will see it on the next slide. Yes, our message is Inoskárt Cluster represents professionalism and expertise. Our members are prestigious, reliable companies. We are a knowledge based community with a significant technology and business values. Uh, that's we find out that, uh, cover, uh, both of what we do. Uh, and about, uh, the branding, the next slide, please. The first step in the building the new brand, we changed our name from Inoskárt ICT Cluster to Inoskárt Digital Cluster to clarify the professional focus. We undertake a role of digital innovation hub to strengthen our regional expert status, officially positioning our cluster members who provide the background of these services as a European level digital experts. Um, the preferred inbound marketing strategy, which is focuses on attracting potential customers rather than, uh, pushy, forceful and significantly higher cost abound, uh, outbound tactics. We use our tools to create value, provide answers, opportunities and solutions for our target audiences. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the main, uh, element, element of inbound marketing is content marketing. Promoting and supporting knowledge and technology transfer is our core mission. Um, and, uh, successful content strategy comes the hunger for knowledge of interested parties, answer their questions and solve their problems. Content marketing naturally provides the material, uh, for email marketing and active presence on social media, supports, uh, search engine optimization, and it, uh, it is also a key tool for, uh, community building, which is in our focus too. So, uh, next slide, please. Uh, what are the content marketing elements we use to promote the cluster? As a part of our external marketing, we have previously blogged, organized the webinars and shared the informative videos to raise a. organized webinars and shared the informative videos to raise awareness and educate. These activities have been undergoing a big changes recently. So let's see why. Next slide please. One of the pillars of organizational content marketing used to be the blog. Inoskárt Professional Blog, Inoskárt Magazine was written by our member organization experts. But blogging has been almost completely replaced by blogs these days and our time for target audiences swears by podcasts now. Of course, we will not give up writing articles, but for some time we have also been publishing video content in our magazine. And from now on, we collect the content in interview format to save the writing time for our experts. Change slide please. And we have, should go on another please. Thank you. In the past, our thematic webinars were the most popular of our activities since we figured things out relatively shortly after the beginning of the pandemic and started hosting online knowledge transfer events. We quickly built up our visitor base and our members welcomed the visibility and networking opportunity as speakers. Next slide please. Our current experience has shown us that today people, including business leaders, are hungry for face-to-face meeting again. So we need to show them something new and exciting in the virtual space to get them to join. Instead of webinars, we are working on a development of new cross-border events in the online space, involving other European clusters to support knowledge transfer and peer learning. Thank you. Next please. Video is a key marketing and educational tool, helping to achieve many business goals. In recent years, aside from producing professional marketing video content for both cluster management and our members, we have mainly focused on knowledge transfer videos. We produce on-site good practice videos involving technology developers and users and made records from our online events available. But today, and please change sides. This kind of content has literally flooded the internet. So as a management organization with a few employees, we cannot compare to it. All we can do is to provide our colleagues the technical equipment such as wireless microphones and high-quality phone cameras, convo program and so on. And in addition to professional video content, we record our own short news reports and even coverage for informative purposes. In addition, the length of the videos watched by people significantly reduced. We plan to create adaptive training platform for knowledge transfer to support the use of multiply learning materials at the same time.
So Nora, we can see some of those videos, we can see some of those videos, I guess, on your, on your website, Inoskárt, right? We need to wrap this up because we're a little bit over time. Do you have much more, much more to say? Many more slides? Can you wrap it up?
Really want to say some words about our events because it's changed for us too. We really see that face-to-face meeting is back again and it's very important to support our members to meet each other personally. But thank you for, to listening. Maybe a short conclusion in the end because we tried to do this communication five years ago. So which was a formular communication. You think that fear best fits of your profile, your cluster continuously key. Even the best content marketing loses its momentum if it's applied periodically. Trust me, we also struggle with the gaps due to lack of capacity. But try to be continuous and you will be success.
Yeah, that's right, Nora. You got to keep the ball rolling, always producing new stuff, new videos, new events, things like that. And it's interesting, you say the face-to-face is important, but also online, what you show online and video is very much the name of the game with, with podcasts like this one and also videos that you produce. Solt, you, you participated in one of these academies that Manuel organizes. Can you give a little feedback on that?
Yeah, actually, I just wanted to add just two sentences to Nora's words. One of them is that actually Nora spoke about the cluster management and the members, but actually we have been involved in several European projects where we are the communication leader as well. So and it requires a third type of attitude, I would say. And my second, second additional sentence is that this cannot be a one-man show or this is not a one-man show or a one-woman show at Inoskárt, but now we have a team of three. We need a team, of course. And getting back to your original question. Yes, indeed. I really liked my, my staying in Strasbourg. I have been managing clusters for twelve years, actually, so I, I know a little bit about clustering, but I still had some new achievements. For example, this design thinking process was relatively new for us and now we are using it in, in some projects of ours. So that's one of my key learnings there. And of course, being there was also a very good networking opportunity. So we have been working with some people I met there also in European projects. So these are my two learning points, let's say, one is a professional and then one is a networking one.
Now, what did you take back to Inoskárt that you, maybe you changed the way you managed Inoskárt after what you learned at the academy?
Yeah, I, I, I tried to be, I don't say I, 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 I do it hundred percent well, but I tried to be more, more, how shall I put it, logical or more organizational. So, yeah, that, that's, that's what I learned and, and yeah, that's my main.
And I guess what you learned, you passed on to your colleagues, including Nora, right?
Yeah, 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 sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, so I passed the, the information to them and now, now we, we grew quite a lot in the coming months. So it, it also requires additional learning phases, that was my colleague. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and Nora, I think, I guess, it's, it's those management techniques you used in, in what you just talked about, right?
Yes, of course. We try to evolve, we try to try new things and to, yes, 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 we, we always wanted to grow.
Okay. Was that the, was that that shift from, from blogs to, to videos and podcasts? Was that something that you learned from the clusters or was that your own initiative?
It's, I, I'm trying to learn from American and European good practices. I always try to find new things on the internet and I always go to trainings for Eurocluster and the other project trainings about communication and really try to, to learn always and continuously. So that's what it supports us about knowledge.
Okay, great.
Yeah, actually, there are specific trainings Nora is, is joining. But also we have been learning a lot from the project itself, from the running projects. We always have new challenges there.
Okay, yeah. These are the last few minutes. Any, any other questions? Please send them in for all of you listening and watching. And Manuel, can you turn your camera on? Johan, you could turn yours on as well. Maybe I go, come back to, to Johan as well. You know, what, what key points did you learn from that cluster, that cluster management that you took back to, to Maranova? Oh, can you turn, can you turn mic on?
Yeah, better now. If, if I have to pick one, I, I, I think I, I like this trend universe on the that, that was to get used to that and.
Okay, good.
If, if I may add, for those who never heard of this, the Trend Universe is a feature that the ECCP platform, so the actual website offers, where US cluster managers, cluster staff can use this tool to understand trends around you, to have like a more structured approach of understanding trends in your ecosystem and surrounding. And well, can analyze those and use that for your decision-making or your daily work. So yeah, nice, one of the features of the, of the platform.
And, and yeah, and Manuel, I mean, you know, I, it's great to see you got really super high feedback on, on everything. Does that mean that, you know, as they say, if it ain't broke, don't fix it? Or are you thinking about doing some kinds of modifications to that, to that academy instruction?
Well, thanks for the compliment and also thanks to you participants for, for those feedback numbers. And no, indeed, I mean, it, it makes me happy, first of all, to see that it, it works as we intended. Nevertheless, we will always try to optimize a little more and think to, um, think to kind of implement couple of those suggestions that we still hear left and right or in the discussions, in the personal talks. So seeing to try to increase networking possibilities on a structured format, not only with a coffee, but even more networking and peer learning. So there might be, there might be little changes as to always improve what we do.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. And, and any suggestions are, are welcome, right? I mean, you're always open to feedback and that's in part with these, these cluster collaboration talks that we have every week or to every couple of weeks, we do that too. It's all about feedback. Yeah, thanks Nina for the Trend Universe link. You can see that in the chat if anybody has any other questions about that. Nora, I got a question for you here from Sylvia. Do you think, Nora, do you think that participation in fairs are a good tool for clusters' communication and promotion? What about fairs?
We have tried to participate in fairs representing cluster members, but we have been not very successful, unfortunately. So I think that it's not a good thing, but it's not very effective that we want it to be. But we always.
Takes a lot of organizing, I think, right? You have to, there's a lot of organizing when you do a fair, right?
Yes, yes, it's a very, a lot of organizing, very lots of work to reach cluster members, to get involved. And they don't get enough connections and networks from this side. But we always think about to make a big fair for all the Hungarian clusters. And, and I think it can be more fruitful for clusters to present their, all of their members than in other fairs. So I hope that it's a hit for you, Sylvia.
Anything to add there, Solt?
No, actually, I, I also participated at first with different members in the past and somehow it, it didn't, didn't really work. Let's say, let's say our cluster represented six members of ours and somehow it, however, it was very good for the cohesion of the members, actually. So it's.
Okay.
But business point of, from business point of view, it was not the best.
Not, but what's, so what's the alternative? Is like networking events or what, what do you do instead of that?
What we really do is we, we try to organize events where cluster members meet cluster members of other clusters. So with, let's say, food cluster, packaging cluster, construction cluster and it works.
Okay, great. Manuel, I got a question from Tomas. Is the structure of the CBA, the academy, always more or less the same? Or do you, do you tailor it to?
That, that might, that might refer to two ways of structure. So like the, the overall CBA is structured, organized in a way that we start with some virtual days. So there are, we changed it from actually two rather full-time to three half-day sessions. And so, yes, we will start with, with this virtual session first. And then a couple of weeks later, we do have, we do have these two days onsite to go well further into the topics, into more peer learning, into workshop groups, et cetera. So yes, this overall structure will stay the same, virtual first, onsite later. And then the structure of the contents within, there we might shift a little so like to, to come up with a final agenda. I have to ask for a little bit of patience, but we are very happy to announce and publish that soon.
Okay, great. It's nice to see the feedback there from Rosalia. Hello from ETOZ Cluster for Future from Germany. Thanks everyone for the exciting presentations. And yeah, thank you so much, Manuel, Nora, Solt, Johan. That was great to get all that input, feedback and go forth and multiply. It's great to see all your work. Really good. Thanks so much to all the speakers. And I think now it's time to move on, move back to Nina for some, well, some funding opportunities. How about that? Nina?
Thanks, Chris, and thanks everybody for presenting, talking about cluster management skills and sharing your tips and sharing info on the upcoming CBA, past CBAs. As always, we want like to close with highlighting some funding opportunities that might be relevant for either you, your cluster or for your cluster members to get involved in and to look ahead to see and to support new projects. First of all, the I3 instrument, the interregional innovation investment instrument, as it's a long name, has opened the capacity building strand to be. And here, the call aims to test new approaches for increasing the capacity of regional innovation systems in less developed regions to collaborate in EU value chains and projects. Should refer to the concrete experimentation of new approaches, solutions and good practices to engage in interregional innovation processes, mobilizing ecosystems and particularly SMEs. So we're looking here into projects for connecting regions and for creating EU value chains and integrating here, best developed regions in the EU into the project. And the goal should be to have a pipeline of potential interregional investments as well as business and investment. So if you'd like to work on that, have a look on the I3 instrument strand to be. Deadline is the fourteenth of November. You will have the link in the chat to have a look at the call. Also open are the strands one and two A. This is a different deadline. This is the deadline of the fifth of December. And the strand one, I'm here, the projects should define financial advisory support for investments in interregional innovation projects. So really on the investment focus in consortium share with share or complement as smart specialization areas and where consortium actors come from regions with varying level of development and innovation performance. And the strand two A looks more into financial and value resupport for projects, focus on undeveloping value chains in less developed regions and integrate them in the EU value chain. So as I said, this is a different deadline, the fifth of December. Have a look in the link in the chat for all the info on the I3 instrument, which is a very interesting tool for the cluster organizations to participate in. And next, we talked about skills. There's also a call for built-up skills. And this particular call focuses on interventions for the building decarbonization. So particularly focusing on the construction ecosystem. And the initiative supports the upscaling of building professionals across Europe to deliver building renovations, offering high energy performance as well as new, nearly net zero energy buildings. And the proposal has two scope options. One is to work on the upscaling and reskilling interventions, enabling decarbonized building stock and energy system. And the scope B looks into a community of practice. So here, the consortium expected to develop an EU community of practitioners, of practitioners with proven. community of practitioners with proven experience in the development and promotion of sustainable energy skills for the building professionals. This is under the live program and the deadline for the call is the 19th of September. Click on the link in the Funding Intenders portal to find out. And Johan also mentioned it, the collaboration with academia is very interesting. So there's a call open for expanding academia enterprise collaborations. Definitely an area where clusters are active and project results are expected to contribute to an improved integration of research institutions into the European innovation ecosystem and improve flow of knowledge, skills and talents as well as improved skills of all involved innovation ecosystems to increase the innovation potential in Europe and the market uptake of new technologies as well as enhance the availability of local talents and enhance entrepreneurial activity. This is a horizon call with the deadline on the 19th of September. So click on the link in the chat that leads you to the Funding Intenders portal to read all about the call. And as always, I'd like to remind you of concrete opportunities for SMEs, which are offered by the Euroclusters, the joint clusters initiatives in the different 14 industrial ecosystems covering a lot of different sectors and covering a lot of activities from innovation support to training support to internationalization. So have a look at the different opportunities that are open for SMEs for your members that are offered by the Euroclusters. So you see here, we are looking into water smart solutions, into training internationalization, textile mobility, electromobility, the creative and cultural industries. And if I move to the next slide as well, manufacturing, energy-intensive industries and a lot going on from the Euroclusters to support SMEs in, as I said, innovation, training, internationalization or the adoption of technologies and processes into their economies. So these are published on the ECCPs. So when you go to the open calls menu, you will find all the calls for Euroclusters. And with that, I hand over back to you, Chris, for the final words.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Nora. One more plug for the, the Cluster Academies is from Ricardo in the chat. He says, "I totally recommend attending CBA. Really useful to open your mind, exchange experiences, networking and learn." Excellent job of Manuel and Hannah and team. So anyway, that was one more plug and hope that, that today's discussion helped to all sort of pique your interest in going and being, participating in these academies. They're very useful, very helpful. That's it for this cluster collaboration talk. Make sure to register for the next talks. You can see there on your screen. Register for the cluster collaboration platform. A lot of good information on that. And you can see everything that was talked about today. There's, it's recorded for playback. Slides are available. You can continue that discussion. You can see on the link there on LinkedIn, the LinkedIn discussion group, very useful. And keep in mind there at the bottom of the screen, hashtag U-Cluster Talks. Let's promote. Let's cast the word cast wider of what we're doing. It's, it's really useful and help for, for a lot of people, including yourselves. I'm Chris Burns. Thanks very much for being with us and see you next time.